One second.
Okay, we'll begin when you tell us. Good evening. It's now 5:07 PM in the regular session of the Planning Commission, the City of Lancaster. Please come to order. Tonight I'll offer a brief invocation. The pledge will be led by Commissioner Tufts. So if you please stand. As we pause briefly to honor our Lord and we reflect on the health, our health, our friendship, the city we enjoy living in, let's be thankful for all the gifts that our God the Father has granted to us. We pray in his name. Amen.
Please face the flag. Hand of your heart, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Since our last meeting, Commissioner Paris has resigned. I was informed recently. And we wish him well in whatever his next endeavors may be. May we have the roll call, please?
Chairman Vos.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Harvey.
Here.
Commissioner Kingmore.
Here.
Commissioner Tufts.
Present.
Commissioner Leslie Underwood. Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Commissioner Underwood is our newest victim and she said to me earlier tonight, she's calm, she's read everything, and she's not concerned at all about anything that's on the agenda tonight. It'll be smooth sailing. Isn't that correct? Hmm hmm. There we go. It'll be okay if you move the microphone close to your head. So when you speak, we can all hear you. Okay. Next time, it's public business from the floor. Any person who would like to address the commission relative to any agendized item is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary and identify the agenda item you wish to discuss. Each person will then be given an opportunity to address the commission at the time those agenda items are called. Each individual speaker is allowed three minutes. Generally, we allow the applicant, if the applicants of particular projects wish to address this, we'll typically give them a little more time to explain their project if they choose to. However, they're not obliged to speak. Do we have any speaker cards?
No speaker cards, Chairman.
Not, okay, thank you. All right, the first action item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of regular meeting of May 16th, 2012.
I move to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of May 16th, 2022.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. What's that? Oh, if you have a speaker card, hand it to Assistant City Attorney, if you don't mind. Sorry, I should have mentioned that.
Chairman, this is for item TTM 61970.
Which item?
That would be item seven.
Okay, thank you. All right. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion on the minutes? No? Hearing none, then please vote. Passes 5-0. All right, the next items on our agenda are new public hearings. We have a number of them. So without objection, the public hearings are open. First item is tentative tract map number 70180 and conditional use permit 15-18. Who's presenting on this? Ms. Swain?
Good evening, Chairman Vos and Commissioners. Before you tonight is a request for a three-year extension for tentative tract map 70180 and conditional use permit number 15-18 to September 18th, 2025. The project site consists of approximately 19.55 gross acres at the northeast corner of Lancaster Boulevard and 44th Street West and was originally approved by the Planning Commission as a residential plan development with 109 single-family lots and six open space lots on March 18th, 2021. The extension is requested to allow additional time for processing of improvement plans and would use all three of the available extensions. Staff recommends that the commission adopt resolution number 22-18 granting a three-year extension for the tentative tract map and conditional use permit. The applicant is here if you have any questions, and I am also available.
All right, thank you. Members, do you have any questions or comments? No? No speakers on this item?
No speakers.
All right, thank you. So we'll close the public hearing without objection. Consider a motion.
I move to adopt resolution 2218 granting a three-year extension September 18th, 2025 for a tentative tract map 70180 and conditional use permit number 15 through 18 for the residential plan development consisting of 109 single-family lots and six open spaces lots in the R-7000 zone.
Thank you. Second, please.
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Further discussion? Please vote. Uh, let's see.
Commissioner Harvey, is yours abstain, or I just want to make it, I just want to clarify?
How about if I redo that?
Let's try it one more time. Give me one second.
We'll have to revoke the whole thing. All right, please revoke.
There we go.
My apologies, I thought you were assigning me additional property in the city. I'm like, I don't own anything that is.
Passes 5-0. All right, next item is tentative tract map number 70181 and conditional use permit 1515, request for an extension. Actually, the next three items are that. Ms. Swain?
Before you tonight is a request for a three-year extension for tentative tract map 70181 and conditional use permit number 15-15 to September 18th, 2025. The project site consists of 23.6 gross acres at the northwest corner of Lancaster Boulevard and 40th Street West and was approved by the Planning Commission as an RPD with 141 single-family lots and six open space lots on March 18th, 2021. The extension is requested to allow additional time for processing of improvement plans and would use all three of the available extensions. Staff recommends that the commission adopt resolution number 22-19 granting a three-year extension for tentative tract map 70181 and CUP 1515.
Thank you. No speakers on this item?
No speakers on this item.
Comments, questions? No? Have a motion then, please? Yep, I'll close the public hearing and then we'll have a motion. Sorry.
I'll put forward the motion that we approve the grant of a three-year extension to September 18th, 2025 for tentative tract map 70181 and conditional use permit number 15-15.
Thank you. Have a second, second, please? A second. Thank you. All right, anything further?
Pardon me, before you vote, can we just modify the motion so you're actually adopting the resolution itself?
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
So I'll put forth to adopt resolution number 2219 granting a three-year extension to September 18th, 2025 for tentative tract map number 70181 and conditional use permit number 15-15.
Very good, thank you.
A second.
Thank you. Are we ready now to vote? Passes 5-0. Next item is also a public hearing on tentative tract map number 71082. No, I'm sorry. Yep, it is. 711082, conditional use permit 15-16, request for extension. Ms. Swain, are you going to say the same thing you did the last time?
I am, so if you would really like to just make a motion and vote, that would be good, too.
Well, you know, we love to hear the sound of your voice. I mean...
I, you know what, we can save the sound of my voice for later meetings in the year because we have more things to talk about.
All right. Members have any questions on this? We don't have any speakers, right? All right, then it'd be appropriate to close the public hearing, consider a motion.
I move to adopt resolution number 22-20 granting a three-year extension September 18th, 2025 for tentative tract map number 71082 and conditional use permit number 15-16.
Thank you.
I will second the motion.
Thank you. All right, nothing further? Please vote. Passes 5-0. And the last of Ms. Swain's items?
No, I have two more.
Oh, no, wait a minute, there's more. Tendative tract map number 70892 and conditional use permit 1517 for another extension. So the public hearing is open on this item. We have no speakers. We'll waive staff's comments. Any questions or comments from members? Close the public hearing, consider a motion.
I move to adopt resolution number 22-17 granting a three-year extension to September 18th, 2025 for tentative tract map number 70892 and conditional use permit number 15-17.
Thank you.
A second.
Thank you. Anything further? Please vote. All right, the next public hearing is on tentative tract map number 74101, which is also conditional use permit 1609, request for an extension. Ms. Swain again. Similar comments? Thank you. We'll waive the staff report. And any speakers? No, okay. So I'll close the public hearing, consider a motion.
I move to adopt resolution number 22-16 granting a three-year extension November 20th, 2025 for a tentative tract map number 74101 and a conditional use permit number 1609.
Thank you.
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Anything further? Please vote. So I just want to share with you all that this nifty iPad that I have here, I finally got the agenda to come up, but all the attachments will not open. Other than that, it's great. Now, I want to share with you, they open just fine at my office. However, they don't seem to want to open here. Now, it probably is operator error on my part. Anyway, I'll just set it aside and we'll wing it. Item number seven is a new public hearing on tentative tract map number 61970, but I don't know who's presenting on this.
Me.
All right.
All right.
So we have, do have a speaker on this item, and we'll hear the staff report and then hear the speaker. All right, go ahead.
All right. Good evening, Chairman Vos and members of the Planning Commission. The item before you is a request for a subdivision of approximately 2.4 gross acres into eight residential lots located in the R-7000 zone. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of East Avenue K6 and Carroll Drive. It is nestled between residential subdivisions to the north, east, and west, and vacant land to the south. The lots range from 7,000, 7,000 square feet to 13,000 square feet. Access to the subdivision would be provided from both Avenue K6 and Avenue K8, and all the streets within the subdivision would be public. The elevations and floor plans for the proposed residential lots would be reviewed and approved by the Community Development Division prior to issuance of construction permits for compliance with the design guidelines and Lancaster Municipal Code. With that, staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt resolution number 22-14 approving tentative tract map number 61970. This concludes staff presentation. Myself and the applicant are available to take any questions.
Thank you. For the record, we did receive a correspondence from the applicant. For the record, we did receive a correspondence from the applicant, Zoka Enterprises, indicating they agree with the conditions of, recommended conditions of approval on both items. This and the next item. So we have a speaker?
Yes, that's Dennis, forgive me, sir, your last name, I can't read, Foley? Oh, there you go. Come on up, sir.
Please come on up. And hopefully the microphone's working. We'll see.
I believe so. I just come to really get more...
I don't think your microphone's working. Hang on a minute.
Because it does say it's not the same as ours. Is it the red one? Okay, so it's not just me. Those are the lights at the time.
Thank you.
How you doing?
Go right ahead, sir.
I just, really just showed up to just, I'm a resident or a homeowner in the area, so I was just trying to get more information on it, on, you know, sizes of houses, the lot sizes roughly around 7,000 square feet. So I was just kind of concerned if it was gonna depreciate my house, or if it's gonna improve it. So I mean, it doesn't seem like I'm gonna have a lot of info today, but I didn't know how I can go about getting it later.
This is an infill project that the subdivision is similar to the adjacent properties, it appears to me to be. Whether, how it may or may not impact value is frankly not in the purview of the commission. We don't select applicants. We consider the applications based on how they conform to the municipal code and the subdivision map act. And based on the staff's recommendation, these appear to meet that standard. How the properties get developed and the type of housing that is placed on them, they must meet a minimum standard, our design standards, which are currently the regulations within the city on how an applicant must then construct a home, what it should look like, the architectural features, that sort of thing. And if you choose to, you can interact with staff here at City Hall, and they can certainly explain those to you, and you can also access those design standards online through the city's website.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions or comments?
No, I really didn't have a lot of questions. I was just more here for information, but...
Right.
I appreciate it.
And the staff's, you know, available Monday through Friday to answer any questions you have, certainly, and they'll, they actually pick up the phone and talk to people here.
Excellent.
They're, they're, we have, we have an open door in this community, and we're grateful for the folks that work here.
I appreciate it.
All right, good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Foley, we have your information as well, so we can have our project planner reach out to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right. Members, do you have any questions or comments? Anyone? No? All right. All right, then, it's appropriate, then, to close the public hearing on this item and consider a motion.
I move to adopt resolution number 22-14, approving tentative tract map TTM number 61970.
Thank you.
I will second the motion.
Thank you. And you did mention that this, the environmental review on this project, these are exempt projects because of...
Infill.
Their size and the infill and all the rest of it, so, okay. You did mention that?
I didn't mention it, but it is in the...
Oh, okay, well, then I read it in the report.
Yes, you did read it.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right. Sorry, I should have mentioned that earlier. All right, anything further from anyone? Nope?
The motion carries at 5-0.
Sorry, I was trying to remember my place here. Okay, thank you. And the last action item is tentative tract map number 61977. Public hearing is open on this item.
All right, good evening again. The item before you is a request for a subdivision of approximately 3.7 gross acres into 16 residential lots located in the R-7,000 zone. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of East Avenue K4 and Elizabeth Lane. It is nestled between residential subdivisions to the north, west, and south, and vacant land to the east and south. The elevations and floor plans for the proposed residential lots would be reviewed and approved by the Community Development Division prior to issuance of construction permits for compliance with the design guidelines and Lancaster Municipal Code. With that, staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt resolution 22-15, approving tentative tract map number 61977. This concludes staff presentation. Once again, myself and the applicant are here if you have any questions.
And this is sequo exempt as well, right?
Correct.
And by the way, thank you for including the disclosure document within the staff report as it relates to the potential impact of conflict of members. That's something new we're doing now, and it's a good idea, so we don't have to think about it. Right? Thanks very much for doing that. All right. So, questions or comments? No speakers?
No speakers.
All right, thank you. So I'll close the public hearing, consider a motion.
I move to adopt resolution number 22-15, approving tentative tract map number 61977.
Thank you. A second, please?
A second.
Thank you. Nothing further? All right. That concludes our action items for this evening. Ms. De La Cruz, do you have anything to share with us?
Yes, I do, just a couple of items here. Last week, was it, this week, I've lost track of time, the hearing was held for the Joshua Tree listing after two brutal days that Ms. Swain sat through, listening to several, what, a couple hundred people that spoke?
Yeah, they had, they had somewhere between 250 and 400 speakers regarding the issue.
And the outcome was, it was continued to October, so we don't have a definitive answer from the state at this point, so we will continue to monitor and track. The city did submit another letter, opposition letter, in the listing, and we're continuing to monitor, and we will plan on participating yet again at the next hearing, whenever that is. So we're still just playing it by ear for now and following the protocols that are currently in place with...
Which means?
Which means that any applicant would still have to go through the process that the state has outlined, obtain an incidental take permit if there is a request to remove. We still need to thoroughly analyze the, any application with Joshua Trees, even if it's one, we still need to prepare environmental review and continue that process. City projects as well, there's nobody that precluded from that. And the other item is, we're scheduled to have a meeting every month. The agendas are full. We are already forecasting as late as September. We know what's on the agendas between now and then, so please, 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 if you plan on taking any time off, let us know ahead of time. We would greatly appreciate that to ensure a quorum. As you know, our group is a little smaller now. We are down two members of the commission. We are able to welcome Ms. Underwood, so thank you, Ms. Underwood, for being here, and we welcome you to the team. A quorum is three members with a five-member crew, so they're, luckily, it is a little less, but please do let us know ahead of time if you plan on taking time off, and we can try to accommodate meetings and schedules and calendars to the best of our ability. And that's all I have this evening, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Yeah, I neglected to welcome Ms. Underwood, I just, since I met with her previously, with Ms. De La Cruz at the briefing for new commissioners, but welcome to our happy group here. So, new commissioners and existing commissioners, are, are we going through the FPPC process as well, and all of, all of the disclosure items with folks?
We should have Ms. Underwood meet with the city attorney to go through the initial ethics training, and then whatever our standard protocol is, and I'll, and I'll re-circle back with Ms. De La Cruz to make sure that we are continuing to move forward in advising and giving you some heads up if there's something that looks like there's a potential issue.
Very good, thank you, yeah. With as many projects that are coming online, as rapidly as they're coming, well, as rapidly as they're coming to us internally, I know how challenging it is with some 40-plus projects in the pipeline and bringing them through the system in time to meet the statutory requirements, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, right?
That is correct. We are experiencing unforeseen circumstances with the volume of applications, and the, the team that is here, literally before you, is the team handling it. The two gentlemen that are sitting behind the planning staff are representing the traffic engineering section and the development engineering section, and they are the two people that are handling those pieces of development. So we have asked the development community to please be patient and bear with us as we navigate through all development. We have by far exceeded numbers in projections, we have exceeded revenue projections, it is a really just incredibly busy time for the city, which is a good problem to have.
Right. It is a good problem to have, I guess. You guys make it very easy for us, so we appreciate it. All right, then. Members, commission, do you have anything you want to share? No? Okay. So this is the time for public business from the floor. I'll announce it, however, I do not see any members of the public here present. All right, then. So then, we stand adjourned to our special meeting of July 11 at 4:30 PM here in these chambers. Thank you all.